We will call, uh, Jody's absent. Uh, please repeat from your phone, uh, put on solid to ask immediately. Have a pledge by Willis groups and a prayer by, uh, Brian.
I have the United States of America and the people of which stands for one nation under God indivisible with every justice forever.
Father, just thank you for this evening, Lord. I pray that you, uh, that your presence just be all over these proceedings, Father. That your will be done in this town, that we can always remember our veterans, uh, like we like to pray for before every meeting. And that you just, um, you be near again near to these persons. And that your will be done through this board's actions, give them the wisdom, um, to make the right decisions, Father. In Jesus' name we pray.
Good job. Approving the minutes from February twenty two thousand twenty four public years. Second by Mike, second by Willis, any further questions? If not, should have supposed to accept. Move by Willis, second by Kip, all four?
Aye.
Approving the minutes from February twenty two thousand twenty four public meeting. Move by Mike, second by Kip, any further questions? The further questions, all four? Uh, Jody's, we care, okay, so, Mary's report, the building's permit, uh, Christian license. Bryce Sherby, we share me firm, to address the council regarding improvement for their bedding zone participating in the event at the park. Go back there. Where at? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Bryce Sherby, I'm Sherby, almost there, I don't know. Uh, we're just seeking approval to be able to do petting zoos in the, uh, in the park of the town. We have a lot of event and event organizers that, um, reach out to us and want us to participate, but we don't have approval to be in the park. Um, we like to participate, we like to be able to give kids and everyone a chance to see our animals, we have exotic animals and all kinds of farm animals. Uh, we, we clean up after ourselves, we don't leave them ass, and the only way you know we were there is we ate some of your grass, tell everybody.
Okay, that's a good presentation, quick. What's the, which is the council? Go ahead, now you made a motion, yes, motion by, uh, Kip, second by Willis, any further discussion? Now we're going on to Jody's asking, Kip, Willis, Lacy, Mike, I have it. You guys, did they, did you wanna? Uh, I mean, you gotta come to the office in front, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I don't know what I need to do, move forward, but we'll make sure to get it done, so.
Come tomorrow morning, speak to the lady in the front with John, uh, her name's Johnny.
Okay.
And, what date you have, should see if it's available.
Yeah, uh, we have, uh, I think April, April twentieth right now, or April twenty third, so, on the weekends in the, in the park.
You're not, you're not hosting the event, you're just.
We're not hosting it, we just wanna participate.
So it's someone else that's renting the park.
It's like the Todd Everloom Festival, I could still.
Right.
Yeah, we just wanna be a man.
I wanna work that.
He's gonna be like the blow up.
Yeah, we, we just wanna be a man up there participating in the event.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Maybe get a little taller, he's drafted.
Yeah, yeah.
So you need to go and congratulate.
Project status report, John, please.
Hey, good evening, the, uh, our sewer treatment plant upgrades, uh, continue, work is in progress. Um, we do need to pass a change order for that project. There was a lot more steel plate replacement as opposed to fill filling on it. Uh, so, one year we need to pass a motion allowing that to be addressed. And then, you know, need to address it, it's, uh, the increase, I think, of thirty-five thousand two hundred.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three two fifty.
You don't have it all. Okay, we need a motion to add a change order to, uh, to the agenda, for the North Sewer, second by Willis. Second by Lacy, audience once, audience twice, audience three times, all four? Move, okay, uh, Kip?
Hello, keep up.
Apologize for not making you do.
Hey, I apologize too, 'cause that's your pocket you.
How we done with it? The email was about, we got, I got it. And thank you all. So, but, uh, we go ahead and discuss it now, John?
Basically, we had two hundred square feet of steel plate replacement and four hundred square feet of infilling with epoxy. Before they came on with the real paint, and basically, there was nothing to kind of say.
Okay, uh, so. Just need a vote to go ahead and approve the change order?
No.
Move by Willis?
I have second.
Second by Kip. Discussing the bit part, I think we ought to take a recommendation to the councils, take it out of American program. Because, so we've got a little bit of money right now, but, uh, so we've got money improvement, so, just my recommendation.
Yeah, 'cause we already, the town's portions are at a hundred forty thousand five fifty, so if you haven't had a thirty-three thousand two fifty today, you're looking at a hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred. In total, like, the town would have to, uh, turn.
So, you are, anything, taking it out of American program money? Just to pre, uh, include that in the motion, second by Kip. Okay, any other discussion? Any audience, by the audience, now we're going, uh, Jody's asking, Kip, Willis, Lacy, Mike, I have it. Okay, done?
Okay, again, contractors may be good, but, uh, this should finish well on top of the project. Uh, survey seven, the beds are off, being open for that project tomorrow. Dedication project, the C O L, again, we've done most of approval, FEMA's reviewing it. We sent email out to Steve's leases office asking for an update to see if they can get us some information that kind of is, uh, providing. The infrastructure grant applications, which are the four major drainage projects in the town. F M A, which is actually also FEMA, is the grant that we are getting for that project. They asked some questions last week, we're addressing those, we should get back, those answers back to them before the evening. They were not, uh, very extensive. Uh, survey is eight, we've sent a survey to Gere, uh, to start working on the title appraisal work. She seems to have everything under control, but I'm gonna call it tomorrow, just to make sure. The replacement, uh, the sewer line station behind Wheaton Road, uh, we got some comments back with facility planning. We expect to have that addressed this week, hopefully tomorrow. And then, so, like, y'all next meeting will probably ask for that.
What about that, Mike?
Our model C drainage, we're still working on those plans, we expect to meet with, uh, y'all staff. And with the sweet girl next week, some preliminary layout, uh, Mike, you're drainage commissioner, correct?
Yes.
Any feedback, uh, take it now, talk to you all after whatever the case may be. That's where I mean. So we have.
Alright, any question by council? Well, don't wanna make a motion to approve it.
I don't know.
Move by Kip.
Okay.
Say it about Lacy.
So before we, there was on the, there was a question on the communications policy, whether to make it applicable to, let me see. Basically, the communications policy was to have, the gist of it was to have all communication between the police department and administrative department via email and copying if it was from the police department to the administrative department. Copy the mayor or the mayor's email if it was from the administration to the, I think I got that backwards. Basically, copy the, if there was communication to the administration department, copy the mayor. If there's communication to the police department, copy the chief on the email. But the option was to whether you wanted to make it applicable to all them, basically just the chief communicating with the administration department and just the mayor communicating with the police department, or we also wanted to make this applicable to the employees of the police department and the employees of the administration department.
Okay, good for what we call.
Okay, so that would need to be, that would need to be, if that's the motion that you made, that would need to be a motion of a second and approval. Or if we wanna discuss it further, maybe let it not. Or let it not.
Yeah, cuz what I saw was just a draft, I didn't see anything of a second's coming. Now moving in second, then forward to the draft.
Correct, so this is what was given out last, last meeting, if y'all wanna, alright. If y'all wanna finalize, if you want me to finalize that and have it on the, to, to them for the next agenda, I can do that. Um, because again, there were, there was some blanks that needed to be, that were one of them. And then the, uh, the grievance procedure, we had whether, there was a blank, you know, whether it applied to administrative employees only or police employees also, so.
Yes, uh, Mike, that's what I'd do, like last week, last meeting was the draft, if we had anything to add. Start out a piece about going back and forth, if there was a complaint and that's what I voted on, and then did you all stuff something to hold on. That would not necessarily just.
You know, I can, I can have it finalized for the next meeting if I wanna do that. We have formal, formal. No, we just had the motion in the second.
Okay, okay, any other questions? Okay, we're on it.
Okay, but that, that, that motion in second was to approve these drafts, so if they wanna, if they wanna remove the motion at second and just the next meeting, I'll have the final one to be voted on.
Alright. Go down below.
Resent your motion.
Resent the motion. Next meeting, either house, a draft.
I'll have the final to be voted on.
Yes.
Really, you said, resent.
Is that, that's fine. That was good. She behind it now.
The, the only thing that I have is about the communications policy, sometimes the police department and admin have to actually meet to get stuff done. So if this is gonna be via email, it doesn't, I don't think it's gonna work, I don't think that section of the policy is gonna work. You know, we have to pass paperwork back and forth to each other, my secretary has joined with ticketing counts, they help each other and ticket tracker, so they have to talk on the phone or physically meet to get stuff like that done. So the strict, strictly email policy, I, I don't think it's gonna work, it's, it's not gonna be good for either department. Small thing, yeah.
If that needs to be a meeting to be made, can I schedule a meeting?
Yeah, we can meet, we can say we can't talk, but try to communicate and documentation and give it through. Can you know how to give it through?
I'm all about the emails, but a paper trail, there's some times where you're gonna have to meet, so.
I don't think that there says you can never meet again in the town quarter ever between the administration and police department, I don't, I didn't see that in that draft.
The communication policy is strictly and only via email, and when it says strictly and only via email, if that's the policy.
I guess it depends on how you take strictly and only, I take it as you can still have a meeting in mind.
Yes, I've come with this, and that'll be.
I don't like to go into like, oh my god, strictly and only means I can only do this, or like, I get what you're saying, but I think that in, I think for, for all of us, then you can have a meeting, if you say, let's have a meeting, let's schedule a meeting, then you got a meeting.
Until when, Lacy, if you get in that, you know, have your paper trail, who set up your meeting? If they don't ask.
So strictly and only would have to be an aspect of why.
I mean, we could, we could add a provision in there that you can, you know, if the police, if the police employees need to have a meeting with administrative employees, against the approval of the mayor, I think you have our vice person, against the approval of the chief.
The same.
Don't want to have that.
Alright, any other, any other comments? Alright, go ahead, Brian.
The next was council to authorize the mayor to sign cooperative endeavor agreement and active donation with the Fush Parish government of a Starlink device to be donated to the town. This is a, uh, basically a satellite internet antenna that the parish has, they wanna donate to the town in order to use during, uh, time when the internet's down, so.
But then have written.
What's that?
I read.
It's written, so written, written donation should be decided forward.
You should have, you never remember the act of donation. Um, that is very good.
Move by Lacy, say it about Mike. Any further discussion, any question? Alright, now what I, Jody's absent, Kip. Willis, Lacy, Mike.
Aye.
I have it, okay.
Okay, council to authorize the mayor to sign letter of no objection for the Fush Parish Forest Commission in conjunction with DOT to place signs up to the town of COVID Meadow. These are, um, is the tourism department is putting together a series of sound lines showing like where the parks at, different tourist attractions. So they're gonna be installed at the DOT driveway, uh, but they ask the town to basically issue a letter of no objection. I review that, I have no, no objection to it, y'all.
Alright, move about Kip. Say about Willis, any question, any further comments? Now, what I, Jody's absent, Kip, Willis, Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it, okay.
Okay, number six, it's possible executive session to discuss security policy regarding access to. So if y'all wanted to go into executive session, we can do it now, or if y'all wanna make a motion to do it in the, you know, move it on the agenda to the end of the meeting. So we have a busy agenda. So we have, uh, who wishes the council? Let's move it to the end of the meeting.
Motion made by Willis, is that correct?
Okay.
Say it by Lacy. The first to the end of the meeting. What I, Jody's absent, Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it, okay. Alright, thank you, Brian. And chief, just put that.
Uh, thanks for sharing, Lane, there's, uh, Washington Street, Washington Street. Uh, Sheriff saw that they complete some of the streets, he didn't tell me which ones, but he's trying to download the information, get the reports to us. Once they're done, he'll go to five, he'll get them to me, and once those streets are done, he'll try to do the streets that he hasn't done recently, but he did in the past. Uh, police department equipment, dash cameras are still expected for May of twenty twenty four. Uh, LPAS sort of put speed reader, subway drive, those things are a hot commodity, it's, it's hard to get them cuz they're being used throughout the parish. We're still trying to get them. Uh, police employee benefits, it's nothing new for me to report, I guess it's in the board's hands, we did have a discussion last week. And I just don't know how to proceed from here, I guess it's in y'all hands on what to do, if it's for all employees or a police department or, or what I view. And number five, request approval for mayor to sign a detail agreement with Rayla Fushport Commission for police personnel with thirty dollars an hour. Rayla Fushport Commission, uh, has agreed to allow their officers to work the town for thirty dollars an hour, they're going down on their detail rate from the fifty to thirty. They're patrolling their own vehicles, but they'll answer complaints in the town and patrol the town, they'll be dedicated to us for, for that process.
Alright. So about Willis, say it about Kip, any further discussion, any questions? Now, what I, Jody's absent, Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
I have it. Alright, oh, business, Hurricane Island repair. Project number six, seven, three, two, one, nine, pumping station building, install insulation to take base within that couple of weeks, so wait. The following project has been allocated to receive funding for with work completed deadline February two thousand twenty five. Up behind Louisville, big electrical box to the pumping station, street signs, the car signs, lift station and sewage plants, town hall and few of them, pumping station, before shed, Christmas lighting, inventory, hardware was placed. Little bit, it got dark, up there, boat, drainage canal debris removal. Senior citizens crap building fifty percent rule request pending CRC review. Project seven, one, seven, three, one, three, two, four, two, swimming pool. Pump building, swimming pool, badhouse building, a Montalito one project, fifty percent rule pending initial development. The Fush Parish Hurricane Island Recovery Grant began submitting invoices that they are completing to meet the deadline for the sixth, thirty, twenty four. Parish to request a second and third report of twenty four to repair the asphalt, Riddwood Boulevard, D.C. Drive and Norman Street. Council to consider authorizing the mayor to purchase an online charge, trash cans and park waiting. Trash cans for the park, waiting must do, recreation district funding, expect February two thousand twenty four. Trash cans have arrived, been placed and likely removed from the agenda.
I really, I have moved, they have everybody, y'all have to move along and supplement, they look really good in the park. I think the Fush Parish preparation part.
Yeah, alright, there's a move.
I still make that.
Okay, motion made by Lacy, and move say about Willis, Dr. Redmond. Alright, any question? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question, what is the, uh, is the type of pump or water source on one sixteen Henry Street?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
What is the type of water source that's on one sixteen Henry Street?
What, not?
It has, yeah, is it, what's it for, that, because on some of my property there, and I need to know if that's gonna be replaced or removed since the hurricane.
Okay, that's which.
But I wanted it to be right there.
This is not an agenda when it comes to public comments, we can talk about it, okay?
Oh, thanks.
All the respect, we just gotta talk about the agenda. So there, there was a motion in the second, and, uh, we're going on, Jody's absent, Kip, Willis, Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it, okay. Good job. Okay, L, L, uh, LGP application submitted eleven thirteen, twenty three, results expected July, approved at twenty four. Confirmation procedures, okay, did not, you made it in?
Affirmative.
Alright, sir.
Uh, first one is BC ten twenty three, this property has been condemned. Uh, deadlines for repair or tear down is set for March fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, uh, yeah, two thousand twenty four. Uh, there's no action necessary at this time. BC ten twenty six, this property has also been condemned, council gave it until March eighteen, two thousand, two thousand twenty four to repair or tear down. Uh, no action is necessary. Uh, BC ten twenty nine, the property has been condemned, uh, council gave owners until March eighteen, two thousand twenty four. To sell or repair or demo, uh, there is no action necessary at this time. Uh, BC ten thirty, uh, condemnation is set for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, uh, there is no action necessary at this time. Uh, BC ten thirty one, uh, the property is set for condemnation here at this date. Uh, however, we do not have service made on the, uh, owners for the property. Uh, we request an ad hoc attorney to appoint about a council to represent the absentee owners.
Thirty one. Second, please. Is that in thirty one? Thinking there are.
Yeah, and now we're here today.
Yeah, you. Oh, you did say.
Yep, me, he couldn't make it, so.
Oh, you read it there?
We do believe that he, uh, complied with all.
Okay. They just asked your name.
Dolan Petrie.
Yeah.
Terry.
He was here last week, we talked about the raft is in back of the building.
Uh, yeah, I, I think you read all the wrong ones, Tom, it's ten thirty one, that's.
Total war on service.
That's why.
Yeah.
So I just have something here, but please, go ahead.
No, he does believe he, uh, complied with the repairs, so I'm not sure someone went out.
Yes, yeah, that's my way of looking for today, ten thirty one.
You mean the others?
Yes, sir. Yeah, which, uh, yeah, uh, all the corrections for all the areas of concern for previous inspections have been made. Uh, I put one here, don't finish the capping on the, the, the front roof of the building.
The capping, we'll give a list of yes because, thank you, because we have never received an actual list, and I think you told Laura the one time, and then they didn't forget.
Yeah, so, all, all they, all they have enough to do is just finish the, the roof capping and anchor the, the, the base plates for the posts. But as far as the building is concerned, it's no longer in building condition.
Okay, so anchor base plates and the roof capping?
Yeah, sir. He can tell on the, on the side of the faces, that way. Yeah, he's got half of it.
Okay, great, okay, and we have, uh, another one for this?
I'll move that we give, I'll tell April first meeting, uh, get it done.
Is that me for who? So, are you agreeing, or is that it's not available anymore?
There's a motion.
Okay.
By Mike, the G.
April.
Everybody's out of order.
I'm sorry, what?
Say she's out of order, she don't wanna.
She, she's, probably guess she's coming down some night, whatever.
Okay, so do we have to come back because he said it's not available anymore?
Yes, come back, you had a noise, ma'am.
So that, and then we'll take you off the list and you'll be free, you're not off the list by now.
One more, one more, one more round.
So I'll say to you like, I have to go one time, I got it done.
You had to go three times. Kinda April four, which is the way.
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mike, eight, three, eight, in the second. Say about Lacy, any further discussion? Alright, we're going on, Jody's absent, Kip, Willis, I think I have some more to say. Alright, uh, Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it. Maybe come on.
Okay, I can go now.
Yeah.
No, oh, come on. Thank y'all, I appreciate your patience.
Uh, next one is BC ten thirty two, uh, the condemnation order has been issued for giving days to, uh, repair or polish. Uh, that is set for March eighteen, two thousand twenty four, uh, no actions necessary. Uh, BC ten thirty three, uh, this is an update report, uh.
Um, I hired the, the, the carpentry, he, um, has me on the list and he will send the porch and the roof soon. Um, I spoke with him this morning, he will be hiring people to help him to complete the job. So that's what he told me this morning, as of now.
Alright, who's the wishes of council?
Aye.
Thirty, thirty, thirty.
If you could just keep us updated, let me see some progress, anything, like, can you bring us the last time that you had?
We know that, I thought.
I put that name, bros.
Oh, you need it on the zone, but if, if council wouldn't do that, it's fine. Set the hour. There's a motion, made by Willis, give it that three days.
Of the April first.
Y'all want, do we wanna, um, have a paper for the sign just agreeing to come back for another, a future meeting, y'all wanna do it for the April fourteenth meeting? Have her come back April fourteenth?
Yeah.
Mr. Willis, did you do a succession bar or is she a co?
Yes.
She can make a motion.
April fifteenth.
Wait.
Whatever.
Rushing out your guard. Alright, so I was just questioning this.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll make the motion, because I feel like the people were telling you that if you started now, like, you came every other time, so I'm sure you're gonna have something done, and give us a thing, so. I'll make the motion to the curtailation, so I'll, okay?
I think you think with fifteen.
What else?
Right, fourteen, you put fifteen.
He said fourteen, he said fifteen, which one are we? Fifteen, get the, get the attorney on track.
I'll say the motion.
Say it about Lacy. Any further discussion? Jody's absent, Kip.
Aye.
Willis. Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it.
Thank you, y'all.
Next up is, uh, BC ten thirty six, uh, we just, uh, hired this condemnation hearing, uh, tonight. We have an update, uh, from our, uh, CBA. Yeah, the following inspection progress has been made to make the roof of this structure weathered tight, and a permit has been obtained for the work. Uh, so it should continue until the building is completely weathered tight for a sale occurred to do owner to begin the renovation process with proper permitting. So the, the roof structure is weathered tight, they got the, uh, decking on, the underlying is installed, the walls of the structure are still open, that's the, the weather tight. Get it addressed, the walls. Another speed?
Yes, sir, um, we have, um, someone come in Thursday for the final assessment, and then next week the materials will arrive, and they're gonna do the completion of the roof at the side, and then the enclosure of the front of the walls and the vinyl siding all, all around it. So do I come every thirty days, not every thirty days, or do you kinda get like a sixty day, come on the April fourteenth?
The wishes of council, they, they, you know, they want.
Okay.
Do that, you know.
Because it's gonna take them some time to do all of that.
Alright. Are you on, except?
I mean. April fourteenth is more than thirty days.
Yeah, it's sixty, yes, right, so we can do it. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I make a motion for Lacy.
There's a motion made by Lacy, second, say about Mike, any further question, we'll work here.
Why would she have to come at the inspect, if she could come every thirty days and see the progress that's going on? Why does the, I don't plan or make it short every thirty days? But procedurally, you need to, every one of them has to be a condemnation hearing, just properly notice. If you wanna be able to give a, if the council wants to give a binding order to, you have to fix one degree or, so they actually have to, the landlord has to be here for that hearing.
I like when this is buried, like, he had this, this to do. Good. Any, no, that's what a question, we're going on, Jody's absent, Kip.
Alright.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
I have it.
Council, BC ten thirty seven, uh, council gave, uh, the potential purchasers that was looking at the property thirty days to make some headway on the purchase, uh, and that's, that, that, uh, final day is set for March eighteen, two thousand twenty four. Uh, that's what the next update will be given, uh, so there's no action necessary on this item.
I can give them update, but.
Alright, good.
They're waiting for succession to be redone, uh, scope to January and to, uh, period of fall. And hopefully they send it out this week.
Okay, well, you got thirty.
Sale can be made as soon as, uh, when the session.
Alright, good, thank you for the update.
Thank you. Alright, next one is BC ten thirty eight, uh, this is a property that is in litigation, uh, with, uh, Tom C. Ledge Properties, uh, it was scheduled for here in the past, but, uh, as a result of improper service, uh, I think this property rises sort of, well, that's gonna just be on the agenda for a while, while that litigation continues.
Right, not gonna get an update before the next meeting, I don't have a chance to get an update today, but basically, the, uh, they trying to get approval from the judge and opposing part of the insurance company to be able to go and make whatever repairs need to make. So, I'll get a, I'll get an update for the next meeting.
Alright.
Okay, um. Uh, BC ten thirty nine, this is a property where the, the structure had been removed, there was a lot of debris left along the roadside. The council had requested that a letter be sent to the property owners, uh, detailing that the debris needed to be removed at that certain day, so it's still there.
I will see the letter today, so it will be going out tomorrow to the landlord.
That's what I'm actually doing.
So again, it's another safety, so, next speech? Alright, um. This, uh, BC ten forty, the property has been condemned, uh, the council gave the extension for thirty days. Uh, that thirty day extension is due or is completed on March eighteen, two thousand twenty four, uh, and we will update the property at that hearing, there's no action necessary at this time. BC ten forty one, uh, uh, this, uh, property has also been condemned, uh, property owners give the thirty day extension to repair demo with an update due March eighteen, two thousand twenty four, there's no action necessary at this time. Um, uh, BC ten forty two, uh, this property, uh, has been condemned, bid is overdue, uh, on this property before April first, two thousand twenty four. Uh, no action is necessary at this time, so update on April first. Uh, BC ten forty four, uh, this property, uh, has been rescheduled for condemnation, that hearing is set for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, there's no action necessary at this time. Uh, BC ten forty six, uh, the, this property has been condemned, given the property on thirty days to optimize for repair. The deadline for that is April first, two thousand twenty four, there's no action necessary. Uh, BC ten forty eight, uh, this property had an attorney appointed, uh, ad hoc attorney appointed to represent the absentee owners, and the property is set for condemnation here on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, there's no action necessary. Uh, BC ten fifty, uh, the condemnation area is set for March eighteen, two thousand twenty four, it's no actions necessary. Uh, BC ten fifty one, uh, the, there's an attorney ad hoc, uh, appointed for this matter, and the condemnation has been rescheduled for April fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, no actions necessary. And then finally, BC ten fifty eight, uh, we, this property, uh, was scheduled for condemnation hearing in February. A thirty day extension was granted with the condemnation hearing reset for March eighteen, two thousand twenty four, and there's no action necessary at this time.
You can take it out of the, of the profit.
Thank you, please. Thank you for the report, sir.
Let you take it out of the red profit, okay?
Did you figure out the ownership issues?
On Tuesday?
Yes, we did.
We did.
Yeah, I think all the profit that's solid, but not this time. Alright, thank you. You've been, nothing considered ruling for reprimand, you've been tied to be down on the two with nineteen, two thousand twenty four, seven P M. Move about Willis.
Second.
There's a mic, any question? Oh, what is, we're going on, Jody's absent, Kip.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Lacy. Mike.
Aye.
I have it. Alright, uh, go into, any other additions we brought before the council? Okay, you, you come in, I'll see, you can read the end of, audience come in, now you, you can talk about industry.
Okay, um, so, I don't know what it, what it actually is, what the property, it was the okay, I mean, he built it, that was on it, and it had some kind of water source with like vents around it.
It's a sewage plant, a sewage, a sewage lift station.
Okay, so, I'm selling it now, so I have it listed for sale, but, um, so if I sell it, um, is that gonna stay there and get fixed, or we heard it possibly is gonna be relocated to another spot, or?
No, it won't be relocated, but we'll put it down with vents around it.
Okay.
It's a FEMA project, but if it's gonna ha, 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 there's a value of selling it or stopping from selling it, we try to, as a council, do something else, but, you know, do. People already get FEMA reimburses later, but not a lift station, it's gonna stay there.
People already get FEMA reimburse later, but none of these stations must stay there.
Yeah, it's not a problem. I just wanted to know what I tell them.
Yes, ma'am.
We're currently in the bid process.
Okay.
To try to get a contractor. For repair.
Okay, anybody else? Now we, uh, we're going to possible executive session. If they really want, right?
Yes, sir. I would, if y'all wanna do that, it's gonna be a motion and a second, a two thirds roll. Need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Move.
What about Willis, second by Lacy? We're going on it.
I don't know, Lacy. I don't know.
You never said that?
Well, I get it, just so well.
I'm out my hearing tonight, but I was. Uh, Willis, uh, what's going on?
Aye.
Uh, Jody's absence. Kev?
Willis?
Lacy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mike's out, sorry about that. I guess.